Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, September twenty-fourth. We will open the meeting, and with us today is Don Schwanker. Then flag over myself, Mike Stein, as our county supervisors. Lisa Smith, the county auditor. Yorn Beck is here from I T for the county, and Luanne, our executive assistant, is with us today in the background, and Mary is here from the media. First on our agenda today is Jayden Chekell, our Jackson County engineer.
Good morning.
Good morning. So our agenda's got fun stuff, fun policy stuff. So the first one is it's an existing policy, our road improvement policy, which states about like paving, stabilization, and also the level B and C improvements. So it's an existing one. The only thing that we revised on this was as it relates to the level B and C improvements to level A, that the previous policy stated that it was the applicant would be responsible for no less than seventy-five percent. So basically seventy-five resident or applicant, twenty-five county. This new one is basically the, or is the total cost would be on the property or applicant. And however, they would want to divvy that up amongst adjacent property owners along that area of request, requested road to improve would be up to them, but where we would have no cost share. One reason why we are bringing this up is so the policy was enacted last late or early spring, so March timeframe, and it was intended really to just address as to get continual complaints on B and C roads, bring it up. So this policy was created to have something like, well, this is what our policy is, this is how we proceed. But since we've enacted it, there's been two cases already of, well, I want this road improved, and we're in only like the first six months of this policy. If it continues, who knows how many more requests are gonna come through? And you know, the point of the Bs and C roads were to be minimal maintenance, not meant to, okay, let's this policy wasn't created to, okay, let's try to improve all these roads.
What's the policy say after it's improved, then? Where to maintain it?
Once it's level A, yes, it'd be just like our standard roads, we would maintain it.
And again, our previous one said that we would not maintain them. So yeah, I mean.
Well, when it was level A, we was, previous one, if it was changed to level A, we would still maintain it. It was just to get it to level A.
Right.
How that cost share was divided.
So I mean, before we had one, we never even contemplated.
No, we could've said, no, we're not doing it.
Yeah.
It's like, well, why? Or show me why. Well, that's where the policy came from. Here's the reason why.
Well, we always said we'd do this on a case by case, and it, it makes sense logically. We don't have, we don't have at least three hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand budgeted to do this kind of stuff, and we have to have something in place that protects the rest of the taxpayers, you know?
And that's not to say if future ones with the new policy, if future ones come available, or since they come available, come about, that if it made sense for our department as well, that you could do a cost, this policy would not limit you from not doing cost share. If you chose to, like, for example, the two sixty-seventh one, our cost in that, if you divide our total cost, what we had in that, by the total footage of road, it came out to like, our cost was like fifteen dollars and thirty-three cents per linear foot of improvement. That's not to say on future requests, you couldn't consider applying that same amount to whatever stretch of road, length of road.
Well, and it made a little bit of sense to the fact that we could do a lot of the work with our equipment. You know, I mean, our manpower, equipment is, is, I mean, it's costly, it's costing us something, but again, if we can, if we can improve.
Not cost you quite as much as if you hire it out.
Three hundred foot of home in a row, then you can put two half million dollar houses on it, there's revenue there, so I don't know.
So it's really just to try to protect us a little bit more from being obligated of doing such work.
Well, I think it kind of serving its purpose truthfully, the way, the way it read, no less than seventy-five percent paid by the person because the one project, it made sense for them to do it, the other project, they didn't. And so that, in effect, we did it out and separated it a little bit. I don't know if we're gonna, you know, when we did three oh eight, there was like, well, what if somebody else wants their road paid? Well, if it's a five mile stretch and eight people that live on it wanna pay to bring up the five million dollars, it's gonna, you know, pay fifty percent, I don't see a lot of people doing that.
But how are you gonna?
That's also in the state code, though. That percentage for.
That one was the secondary road assessment district, which follows in Iowa code.
Right.
So that one was a little, that one was different than this.
But we said the percentage, we could've said sixty, seventy, eighty percent.
Yeah.
Cause Iowa codes.
Minimum was. Iowa code states a minimum fifty percent as far as the property owners on the assessment district. Iowa code stated no less than fifty percent. So yeah, you could require them seventy, they pay seventy-five, or they pay a hundred.
The problem I see with that is that, again, if that's one of these projects like we just talked about, I don't remember the number of the street, but it was very costly. And if that guy decided, or that individual decided, yes, I wanna go through with this, it still would've cost us a substantial amount of money to do, and it wasn't, I don't know, I guess we could, still could say no.
Still could've said, no, yeah, it's.
But it makes it also hard if you say, that project would've went through a different project, and it's costly to us, and now another project comes in that, you know, maybe there's four property owners going in on it. So yeah, you've got four, you know, big houses coming in, but we still have the same twenty-five percent cost coming to us, where maybe we don't have it budgeted. How do you say no to that group? But you just did another group because they came in first. I mean, this way, it makes it kind of more fair, I mean.
So either way.
More fair to, for us not rejecting somebody maybe as easily as the previous policy.
Either way, we still contribute to the project if we so decide.
Yes, it does. I mean, you can definitely do that. Basically, this would state that they, they would be responsible for a hundred percent, but if the boards would so choose, okay, well, given this.
We'll move some dirt.
We can, yeah, we can, well, looking at previous projects, we dedicated or contributed fifteen dollars, thirty-three cents per linear foot to that road. What is it, what does that equivalent dollar amount to this road? If it made sense, okay, if it makes sense for us to, that's something we wanna consider, or if there's money in the budget, or you know, if there's a happy budget and what have you, but.
Each case is gonna be its own little animal, and you know, we could contribute either monetary or, you know, if it would be some dirt work or whatever it might be, but each case is gonna be different.
It's just, when we create the policy, it was not intended to try to improve the level B and C road, which it seems that the route, it's kind of going down, is, oh, this is how we improve our road. That, that wasn't the intent of it.
What's the wishes on the board?
Motion to approve.
Policy change?
Just, you know, you talk about making them pay a hundred percent, but then try to figure out ways that the county can maybe pay a certain percentage. The one that we had says at minimum seventy-five percent. Is there also stated maximum?
No, no, it just states.
Maybe if we just change it between seventy-five and a hundred percent depending.
Well, I think the hundred percent would already be under, if they're required to pay no less than seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
I would think just the maximum of a hundred is kind of understood, yeah.
Yeah. I think it's. I don't know, it's up to you, Mike.
I fail to hear a second. I would vacate the chair position and second the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Hmm, aye.
Motion carried. Will reclaim the chair at this point?
Uh, next one is a new policy, so we've thought about this for a while. So we get requests quite often on signage on roads that's not required by the M U T C D. So for example, on some roads, you might see the yellow diamond shaped tractor crossing sign, or sometimes there's ones that are cattle crossing sign. We get requests often of, I want one of those installed. Uh, so for example, we had that request last winter, this past winter, on Washington Mills Road, just along the Dubuque-Jackson County line. We put the sign up because we didn't have any sort of policy, and within literally three months' time, the sign was stolen because, which we kind of expected such because that's what passed it. History has shown, it's just with those types of signs, people, you know, nobody wants to steal a curb ahead sign. It's, well, there's one with the tractor, there's one with a cow, or there's one with a deer.
In their garage, huh?
Yeah, that's, they steal it, and it's like, we just put that sign up, and it got stolen, and then the request, well, can you put it back up? Like, it's, it's not required by the M U T C D. I reached out to other counties to see what they do, and they, uh, as with typical county policies, they have very similar policies, and so that's what this one is drafted.
So that is a sign policy that you have there?
Hmm, for supplemental signs. So like, our, say for stop signs, speed limit signs, we're required to do, we have to do it, like weight posting. Uh, these would simply be supplemental signs. So as it relates to specifically the school bus stop ahead sign.
Yeah.
Uh, which we do put those up with our site, our site distance study warrants it. Uh, we document that, and that's part of this policy too, is following the M U T C D guidance on that. Uh, but like, school bus stop ahead signs, uh, is one. The children play, children at play signs.
Hidden driveway kind of thing?
Uh, no, hidden driveways, we would still do.
So what, tell me this, Jayden. So let's say the gentleman or somebody, individual wants a cattle crossing sign.
Hmm.
Cause they run cattle from one side of the road to the other, and we don't put it up. Is there a liability issue there that he starts running cattle on the road and, and somebody hits a cow and so on and so forth?
Think he would be liable for that.
I would think so, but if he's got documented that he requested you to put a sign up.
Well, and part of this address is going.
Every farmer going, I don't care, crossing sign, because if that way, if my cows get out, I can say, well, no, I was crossing them, and it's not my fault.
And all these sections reference a table in the M U T C D, which is the manual uniform of traffic control devices, uh, which is adopted by Iowa code for its users. But it states, there's a certain table in there for the advanced placement of those warning signs. So like, if you have added, say if somebody has a cat or cattle crossing the highway, and, but you can see it for how far away does it warrant putting in advance? And if you can already see that ahead, you know, the, the warning signs to warn you of something that you can't see. Uh, so any of those requests would follow doing a site distance study for each one of those.
Did you email us that?
Um, that was with his.
Yeah, I got a copy if you do wanna look through it quick.
No, I wanna look through it quick. I wanna look at it, but yeah.
Look through it. Uh, and then also with the, if it warrants putting it up, and that applicant is willing to pay for the sign, then it gets put up. We would, they would pay for the sign and the post. We would supply the labor to install the sign, and uh, if the sign, say, gets vandalized, stolen, or just over time, they fade, you know, facing the sun, to replace that sign would still be up to that original requestor if they would wanna replace it. Uh, now, if, say that sign is in good shape and gets hit with a snowplow, for example, or uh, wings snow off and knocks the post down, and the sign's okay, we would put that sign back up. I mean, we would be responsible for the post, but to maintain the, to maintain the sign itself would be up to that original requestor or applicant, whatever you wanna call it.
And you said this policy is pretty common amongst other counties and secondary road?
Yes, some counties don't have a policy, they say, no, we're not doing it. Uh, some don't, that don't have a policy, do exactly what the policy states as far as, okay, well, if you pay for it, we'll put it up.
So again, did you email us that policy to read?
You're, section three where it says children of Platteville.
Yeah, I, I updated that. It's now children at play. I thought that too. Again, it's just to protect us from all these, I want this sign, I want this sign, and it just seems to snowball, and if it's warranted, and they're willing to pay, okay, we'll put it up, but if it, if you have adequate site distances, even if they were willing to put it up, I guess if they have adequate site, what good does the sign do? But.
I guess I'll apologize, cause I didn't have a chance to read it over, so I'm not really.
I mean, it just.
If we can take another week to read it, I, I would absolutely read it and say, maybe have a different opinion. I don't. I didn't have a chance to read it, and I'm not gonna read it right now.
Just covers school signs, children at play, farm machinery, trucks entering highways, historic markers, parking signs, other recreational cultural interests.
Are you gonna read it to me? Is that what you're doing?
I'm just saying those are the sections.
Just like.
This should read your emails, Mike.
I'm good, yeah. I should, Don.
So we've been in the works a while to finally get caught up with projects and plans that's finally starting to bring some of this forward, I guess, of ongoing stuff. Which I still have to get to, like the entrance, I think we talked about a while ago, the entrance uh, standard as far as maximum grade, I still have to come up with that yet, but finally getting to where tackling some of these policies.
Well, we appreciate that, looking at it. What's the wishes of the board?
Motion to table till next week.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to second table. I appreciate that, just the opportunity to read it over. Um, I, I apologize again, I didn't. I may have seen it and run, say, I'll read that later and then go back to it. That's probably what I did. And Don wants to read it now, so he didn't read it either. Motion to approve? Say aye.
Motion to table.
Motion, motion to approve the table. If, if the, motion was to table it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carry.
And if they look different, since there's on it, we're just putting on our new letterhead too, so that's the only other change you can see, different from before, to try to get it more.
New letterhead? New office, new letterhead.
Well, we're stepping up.
Can't let Todd take all the credit.
Yeah, that's right. Not anymore.
Uh, so just wanted to give a couple of updates with reclaim. Uh, it's been dry. We didn't get the rain. We were kind of, or what rain we did get last week wasn't enough. So lest we get some rain this weekend, like they originally called it for, but now it sounds like it's backed off, we are essentially done with reclaim, just cause by the time we would get rain, then we're gonna be into that middle to late October, and with issues ran into last year, we don't wanna do that, and it also frees up our department to address some of the things that have been slacking, I guess, shouldn't say slacking, but have been kind of put on the back burner while the two crews have been running. So like, you know, just everybody touching up their roads, some patching that can be done, what have you. Uh, but where we are to date is, and they're not reclaiming this week either, just cause it's dry. But we are at a hundred and three miles completed, so we have surpassed last year. Uh, didn't hit a goal of a hundred and twenty some miles, but given the lots of rain that we encountered early summer, I guess I'm more than satisfied with where we are at today as far as completing, and that is primarily due to rain, the two crews. Without that, we would not be near as far as what we are.
No, for good things, I don't appreciate it. We don't wanna jeopardize, you know, anything that, I mean, again, some places got rain, some didn't, but not enough that, I don't think.
What we're, another real worry about is if we do get substantial rain, uh, like with some of those roads that, if it has been really dry, we're gonna have to do some dressing up, so it's like, let's keep it towards manageable, so.
Um, question as far as the, um, snow fence, cornrows, hay bales, whatever it may be, have you gotten some applications?
No.
No? Because it's odd, I've seen in a couple of different places where people are shopping that they have left like eight rows right on top of the hill, thirty, a hundred feet from the road.
Unless that's what they intend to do yet, but we haven't seen any applications come in yet.
Interesting.
Cause we have that policy enacted now, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I haven't seen, there's been no request.
I've seen a couple of spots that are problem child too. I know they are, and they, and they left some, so maybe they are.
Yeah, maybe it's in the works yet, once they get some free time, but we haven't received anything. Uh, just an update.
I am updating the, the, the company's.
I'm sorry?
That agenda, they can leave me?
This is Lisa's. Yeah. Tomorrow, I am going to, uh, University of Wisconsin-Platteville's career fair, so we were, Iowa State's filled up super fast, so this relates to try and find an assistant. Uh, Iowa State's filled up fast, Platteville still had an opening, so that's where I'm going tomorrow to age interest, I guess, or try to get interest. So I'll be there tomorrow, and Stacy is off tomorrow, so our office will be primarily closed, cause our inspection staff will be on the two bridges we have going on too, so let's not say there might be somebody in once in a while, but I could plan on ours being closed tomorrow. Uh, and one, I guess, as far as construction goes, those bridges, they're same process as last week, driving pile on both bridges, uh, moving along as expected, no issues. Um, and then one final update is on the T SIP stuff, so that is our grant that we received last year for the destination lights at five of our intersections that are unlit. Uh, sent out proposals to lighting contractors last week to get boats back for the install of those, to try to get those moving, since we got the money awarded, let's start, put proposals together to get it going, so. They'll get, they'll send those back to us mid-October timeframe, and likely wouldn't be constructed till next year, just given lead times on poles and all that stuff, but at least moving forward with that.
Okay.
So.
You see, no, if you haven't looked at the claims, your engineer department was a little hard on us, just, just.
Lot of equipment coming.
New equipment, and some roads that we paid for, and some painting and some striping, you know, it's that time of the year, so get things done.
We have a budget and stuff for. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
And as it relates to like the, you know, we paid for the one eighty-fourth bridge, that's the reimbursement style, so we have to uh, eat those costs for that first month, and then we, once the claims process, we submit the reimbursement to the D O T, so we'll get reimbursed for that, but nonetheless, yes, it still has to come through.
Yep.
Possibly, yeah, it was a pretty big claims period.
I would just work on it a little bit.
Thank you, Dan. First month, I need spending a lot of money. Getting a lot of progress.
I'll do so.
That's all right.
Thanks, Jayden. Have a good day.
Yep.
Are there any visitors or citizens, either online or present, that would like to approach the board? Seeing none. Next on our agenda is Julie Fern, our drug-free communities project coordinator. Good morning.
Good morning. I believe in your package, you have a contract between ASEC and the county for the next grant year, which starts Monday, September thirtieth. Um, it's pretty similar to previous years. There is a three percent increase in salary, and the insurance is always a guess. We don't get our numbers till October, and an open enrollment is November, so they're always guessing on this contract. They always put in an increase, cause it seems to go up every year, but that number is something of a guess.
It's kind of like a pastor, we approve it, but it's all paid through a grant.
It's all, yep, it's passed through through a grant. None of it's county dollars.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ASEC contract for a drug-free communities grant as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Same sign? Motion carry.
Um, do we wanna take just a minute to talk about this? Mike gave me the magazine with some ideas. I have actually talked to Carissa up in Dubuque County, and I know Gabby, who's in Polk County, not that we're a great comparison to Polk County, and I'm well aware of that. Um, there is some interesting stuff here from Brummer. So looking at the services we have, we did an assessment of what we have in Jackson County, what we don't, and the thing that kind of keeps popping up is that people who are in recovery lack support to stay in recovery, become employable, and become productive and contributing members of society. So what we're tentatively gonna bring to you, and we can put something together with information, is it's called a care navigator. So it's someone who would literally sit with them and apply for jobs. How do you handle that question? Are you a felon? Work with them and workforce to get their record expunged, if that's appropriate, so they can get jobs. Work with them on finding landlords that'll work with people with criminal records. It's really like rubber meets the road, organic, helping them find a place to live, helping them get jobs, you know, and become functional. Now that I have a job and I've never had a budget, how do I make this money? It is very like organic level, helping people get into a positive lifestyle, so they remain in recovery. Cause when we look at who comes through ASEC, and one of the relapse things that we hear a lot is, they've, you know, been working recovery, they've been in recovery for five, six, seven months, they can't get a job to save their life, they can't afford to have a house. And it's a relapse issue, because what's the point? And they're frustrated, and they're tired of living under the bridge or wherever it is. So if we can address some of those things, it'll keep people in recovery, which benefits all of us, because they become employable, which should reduce crime, and it makes us all, makes the whole community stronger. Um, lots of communities have care navigators already functioning, so I've sent out emails to other counties that I know and say, hey, how's it going? What does it look like? So we're gonna get information from them. I wanna put it together in a packet, and maybe a work session someday, maybe just doing like this, whatever would work for you. Um, it probably wouldn't be a full-time position, cause we don't have the population to need that. I would guess probably a point five full-time equivalent person to manage the amount of people that we have. Um, and looking at who can provide that service. I mean, ASEC could, but Robert Young does an amazing job as well, so that's looking at what services would best fit our needs, and, you know, figuring out who that is, cause I don't know that answer. I think that's discussion stuff. Looking at, you, cause Jackson County already has a relationship with Robert Young. They're doing the mental health services, the co-occurring person with the police, um, really looking at who can best meet Jackson County's needs. Who has the staffing? I mean, that's an issue everywhere, and that, we're not excluded. So I think there's some things to bring information, have some discussions, and look at how we can best meet our needs. Um, and I did look, and in here, one of the counties does have care navigator, or the examples that Mike gave me when I.
Yeah, I thought there was a lot of decent information in that. I, again, maybe something you're already familiar with, like, I thought, well, I'd get it off to you anyway, but.
No.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing what this process would entail, and how it would again, relate to our, our needs and wants, or whatever it may be, not wants, but our needs, I guess. Um, yeah, so we, we could truly get together, put something together, and we can have a work session, and
Okay.
You know, I, I would see more, see something like that than maybe some of the other trips that we're taking and stuff, but and I don't know how they relate to the education part of it, you know, in our, in our schools or wherever it may be, but.
Well, that, you know, the trip this summer, Courtney Keller from Easton Valley went, and she now has Easton Valley, she's got a youth group working, um, together, and it's really good stuff happening, and Easton Valley's really bought into the model of kids can be the best influence on kids. They'd always listen to us adults. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone, but they do, you know, peer pressure can work in a positive way as well as negative. I think we all think peer pressure, and it's always a bad example. It can also be a positive influence, and so they're starting to work on the plan of what their issues are, alcohol and marijuana, what they can do about it as peers. Um, and that's how that really fits in. But yeah, there's no plans to do any of that travel-y. I mean, we did that, we got Courtney trained, we're good to go.
The biggest question I have is does it follow the Schedule A, Schedule B stuff, because if I remember right, seventy-five percent needs to be Schedule A's.
Very much Schedule A.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, and, and I guess, like you say, you, you, you see the end result of these programs, and we don't see that so much, you know, we don't, we don't really see the end result or hear about it as much as in the school system, maybe.
Yeah, I, I think it was a really good investment in Easton Valley to have Courtney, um, trained. I think she intends to be there a long time. She's one of those teachers that kids kind of glom onto, um.
Maybe sometime just have Courtney come in for a few minutes. It's nothing long, maybe give us a little report of what happened and how, how it's working.
I can, she can zoom in.
Yeah, but we kind of keep up with what's going on.
We could have her zoom in from school, so she wouldn't have.
Yeah, absolutely.
I will talk to her, and, um, we will get on the agenda.
One question, just curious. What are mood pencils?
So.
So I see in our claims, we have.
You didn't have mood pencils.
Mood pencils and table coverings. What do we, where do we have?
Tablecloth is for events, it has our coalition logo on the front. The one I've had for nine years, between popsicles and snow cones at the fair, it's trashed and stained and nasty.
I just care.
So we got a new one. Um, we, when we go into schools, the kids then, um, have homework assignments, and we use them when they bring it back, and it's got a positive messaging on it, but like, the whole second grade will do a session with them. You ask them, here's an assignment with your parents, and when it comes back, here's your thing.
See, here, I thought she was gonna give us those pens that change color to base on her mood.
Do.
Mike's pen is red. We shouldn't ask for money today.
And I got it from you.
Change color, it's thermodynamics, they do change colors, that's what they do, but the kids think they're pretty cool, and it's got a drug-free message.
I'd like to have one of them at home, so I know.
I will bring some next time I come.
Jane will know when to get out. I see Jane going down the driveway, she's looking at my pen, right?
I will bring you some next time you can have.
Yeah.
Um, that's what they are, they're incentives for when we do school-based programming.
Nice, yeah, I would like to see.
So that's why, yeah. It probably does come across weird on there, and the tablecloth, we really do need a new one, but then we have.
I just didn't know.
Yeah, the fairs are really hard on tablecloths, National Night Out, really hard on tablecloths with those stupid snow cones.
Okay, appreciate it. Get something put together, we'll look at the information that you have.
And I will talk to Courtney.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving along, Elisa?
I need a motion to approve the minutes of September seventeen, twenty twenty-four board proceedings, as written by Deputy Auditor Hoy. And authorize publication in digital newspapers. So move.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of September seventeen, twenty twenty-four board proceedings and published as written, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
I need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing. In the amount of eight hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Motion a second to approve the claims in the amount of eight hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. And again, just to note, the engineer's office had a little over eight hundred thousand of it, um again, some new equipment. Um some improvements, some striping uh that we had to have done every year, and a bridge that we paid for, so we're moving forward. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried.
I need a motion to rescind resolution number ten fifty-two dash zero six dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four. And approve resolution number ten sixty-seven dash zero nine dash twenty-four dash twenty twenty-four. To authorize the auditor's office annual budgeted transfer from the general fund, oh one thousand, to the historic preservation fund, twenty-nine thousand or four thousand dollars.
Brief explanation, we send in a new one?
So this was something that should have been done at the end of the year, and. Then the treasurer's office was closed for training, then they were closed for. Um. End of the year balancing, and this did not get done, so we felt that it was best to rescind the original resolution and to get the money transferred now.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to approve the uh resolution um. Res- rescind the resolution and the new resolution as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you. And Luann?
Good morning. Feels a lot better in here today. Okay, calendar for this week. Uh tomorrow, Wednesday's September twenty-fifth at nine AM is an iris meeting in Dubuque via Zoom, if they get the quorum, which I'm not sure if they.
I think I forgot it.
Okay. Uh Thursday, September twenty-sixth at nine AM is an RPA meeting in Dubuque for Don and Nan. Um at noon on Thursday is at Eastern Iowa, um Mental Health Disability Services Retreat, that's in Hiawatha. And I believe Jack will be going to that, and then that's a couple of other things to do this week, so. Five thirty on Thursday will be a HACAP meeting by Zoom only for Mike.
I'm actually. I think you did go in person too, but it's in Iowa, but some places, yeah.
Yes, but I think she put on this one Zoom only.
Okay.
So. Friday, September twenty-seventh, seven AM is in the Kokona Leadership Team Meeting by Zoom for Don. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, October first. Isn't crazy? Um. The only other thing I have for business is the growth services contract that you have in your packets. This is an annual contract that we sign for servicing and maintenance on the wastewater treatment facility. Out at the, out at the Andrew Jackson Care Facility. I'm looking for approval to have the board chair sign that and to pay for it.
Motion second to approve the growth services contract for Andrew Jackson Care as presented, all those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried.
That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um. Okay. As far as other board, your report, the commission reports, I had, we had DCIA council bidding um last Wednesday. And yeah, it, everything's running fairly smooth, pretty smooth, I guess, really good move. So they did award some grants and Iowa Finance Authority to homeowner assistance um throughout smaller communities um in our three county area. Uh mostly, and the executive director search will go out and start in January. So we'll be. Looking for another, a new executive director up there. They have a waste authority yesterday, um everything's going well, had a great August, uh they made a substantial amount of money, but again. The biggest. Issue was the insurance premiums that they had to pay. So it, it, uh they keep uh. Growing on us, and we talked about it a little bit, and I don't know where that goes in the future, but um insurance premiums are a problem for all of us, I guess. Um they did get the trench um dug and poured and, or not poured, but still put deep. Um they put like, nobody had to get in, in the trench, so we're fortunate we didn't have to form anything like that, we had to. Put eight foot of rock and then the piping um that was required and the rock on top of it, uh. Frank claims that you can put your hand over top of the vent pipes and feel the gas come up. So there's little gases down there, and he also. Said that, you know, during the excavation part of it, it's, it's amazing to see that. Things that've been papers and newspapers that've been down there for thirty years, you can pull them out and read them. It's kind of makes you wonder.
How's it supposed to disintegrate?
Yeah, I, I don't know, it's amazing that.
It's gonna keep them. Always thought air was gonna break things down.
Well, yeah, the, the methane part of it just kind of disseminates, but yeah.
Took a methane dance?
Think so. It's just, it's required by, by the, by the environmentals, so they come out and they. Check us and audit and, and so on and so forth, so. That's all I have for other um boards or commissions.
Um limestone blocks, RC and D. Michelle's really kind of hit the ground running, she's got a lot of grants and stuff that she's helping people with as far as getting some uh. Grain dryers and different things like that, um she helped the mustard. In Makokona with a few things, and I guess it turned into a really good success. Um and they're looking forward to do in the next couple of years, so. Quite a few things going, it's, uh she's pretty busy, so.
Um I had Board of Health, basically, and. Uh just. Kind of let everybody know, she's looking at really kind of getting some educational. Requirements for our. Pumper people and our well drillers and things like that. Kind of continuing education and education that they have to have in order to be. What we're putting out there, if somebody's looking to say, we're saying they're reputable. Versus just jumping, coming in and applying to be a pumper, so. Um she wanted to kind of push it into right away this coming renewal, and we're like, I think that's a little too fast, so. She's letting them all know about it and that they need to have this by a renewal of the twenty, when they renew in twenty twenty-six, so. Um. The Des Moines Community College, DMAC or something like that. Offer some really good programs that people can do online and stuff like that.
Yeah, we've had different conversations about that, I know she's had some issues with, with individuals, and I know they have to be inspected too, and I don't, don't know. Yeah, we, we need, certainly need to maintain um reputable.
And it's just, yeah, it's trying to keep everybody safe, we don't want people dumping. Illegally or the wrong ways that are gonna hurt other people, you know.
So if they have an applicative license and they have the property to allocate on, so be it, but again. Nowadays, there's many items in these. Systems that don't, they need to be laying out on the.
Right.
Countryside.
Or items in the systems that shouldn't maybe be in the systems to begin with.
Right, so we have to monitor that very closely, and I think she's doing a good job, and I know she even talked about having a ordinance, if you will. Or fines that she can possess.
And that's something else, the DNR is kind of recommending that she pursues that way, that basically if she finds something wrong, she can. Site them right on this site then and find them, so. Um. She's not a hundred percent sure how she's pursuing that and. But it is a recommendation, so she is looking into that also. Early childhood has a lot of different things going on, um they're just kind of wrapping up their budgets and assigning, awarding out all of their. Um monies to the different agencies, uh. Preschool scholarships are going out this month. So they got a lot of, a lot of things going on, trying to get the little ones. Enrolled in schools that can get enrolled in schools for the third graders, because that's not a free program, so trying to get a. Jump on that and helping people that need assistance with that. Moving forward.
Okay. Any other questions or any business before the board this morning?
Second that.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned, thank you.